Yeah, I know you were here last time.
I think it was different.
But it was one that we were talking at one point.
Wait, Wendy was on the phone.
All right, guys, it's 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and call the City Council regular meeting of March 10th, 2022 to order. And we have Pastor Angie McCarty to give the invocation, so if we could all stand, if you're able to.
Good evening, everybody. I moved here four years ago from Arizona, and so I don't really know how to pray, and so all that's happening outdoors. So when I don't know how to pray, I just take a minute to be quiet. So let's go ahead and start with silence, and then I'll be there. God, we want to experience you in all things, and so help us to see you live in the snow and in the sun and in the wind and in the rain and everything that we experience in our creation. We believe that you created us too. And so as you have placed us each here tonight, help us to live into the purpose into which you have created us. Help us to be your people who do the very best work that we can for the people of Spring Hill. Help us to be leaders, to exhibit integrity and goodness in everything we do. Amen.
Thank you. With that, please remain standing for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mrs. North?
Here.
Mr. Van Houden?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum present.
All right. Good to see everybody here tonight. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any requests to the agenda? We do have a few, but are there any other requests to the agenda, changes to the agenda? We got requests to remove the following items from the consent agenda at the request of the developer. That's the consider approval of the improvement agreement, Oakwoods Town Homes, and then the consider approval of the final plat for Oakwoods Town Homes also. And then we're going to add an executive session for the consideration of motion to recess into executive session under attorney-client exemption.
For non-elected personnel.
For non-elected personnel.
Not attorney-client.
Okay, and...
Which numbers are going off?
Five, six, and seven.
Any other requested changes by the council? All right, and then I just entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0-0. Next, we'll move on to presentations. We have a 2021 end-of-year review by Human Resources, and I ask Ms. Monikaesha Jones, you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. So today I'll give a presentation for the 221 end-of-year review for Human Resources. And shortly we'll begin the presentation. Yep. All right. So as an HR department of one, I consider the different functions of the area to be divided into three overarching objectives. But I did list each of the individual functions here, and so there's about 11 that I consider each and everything that I do on a daily basis to fall into one of those categories. And so the overarching between all of these 11 functions, I would say, are the reoccurring things, things that happen on a day-to-day basis. Then there's also the annual focus things, things that I have to do on an annual basis, like insurance renewals and different things like that. And then I also look at special projects and assignments, and those are things that I consider that you wouldn't maybe necessarily consider falling within HR, but I definitely handle it, and maybe that's involving some collaboration with some other departments and different things like that. So everything that I do over the course of this function in HR is I try to see it as falling into those overarching categories there. Well, it's gonna move in just a moment. There we go. So what do I do? So obviously, I could not list in each of the bullets to be all-inclusive, but I did include a couple of things in each of those functions that are on the previous page. So without going through each one of them, you can see different examples of talent acquisition. A big thing is the recruitment strategy and process and the onboarding with all of the hiring that we did in 2021. And there's compensation, HRS, risk management, organizational development, and benefits management. Compliance, payroll, employee relations. So that could be anything from just dealing with the policy and Personnel Handbook to talent management, which is that performance management piece of coaching the directors through dealing with their employees and getting the performance that we need. And then even fact-finding investigations, I consider that as part of the employee relations component. And there's wellness management, workforce safety. And I added the comprehensive view because overall, my goal within Human Resources is to help make sure that I guide, plan, direct, and administer the various components and functions within HR to make sure that the city and its employees are success. And making sure that the voices and perspectives of all of our employees and everyone is appreciated, that they feel like they could be their, bring their true authentic self to the workplace, and basically that everyone's respected. So I just added that little bullet down there to make sure that everything that I do is always with that mindset. I really did test this beforehand, so there we go. So how many current employees do, does HR support? So as of right now, we do have 52 employees. As you can see, our Public Works Department and our PD are our largest personnels. I did include a good little picture here just to show that, you know, we take the contributions to the city seriously, but we know how to kind of let loose a little bit. So you can see one of our officers doing a wonderful pose there. So we just balance those responsibilities. So a couple of pieces on the workforce dashboard. Obviously, with HR, I, there's a lot of things I do that we're not going to go into specifics on, but I felt like giving a big overview on a couple of things here. So we did have 15 employees that ended up leaving the city in 2021. There were 172 applications that we got for the various positions that we posted for us to hire 19. So we netted an increase of about four employees in 2021. And so that was a lot of hard work there, especially with COVID and kind of how things have shifted in the marketplace with hiring individuals. So you can see it takes a lot just to end up with a few that you're going to add on to staff. Demographic-wise, as of the end of 2021, we had the total staff of 52, full-time, 49, part-time, three. And of that, demographically, we have 18 female and 34 male. And one other thing that I added on this dashboard is our absentee, absenteeism rate. And you can see that first quarter, we were at .96, second quarter, .94. So those are definitely some good absenteeism rates. And while they did increase a bit in third and fourth quarter, overall, we are still doing well because per the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the average for local government for 2021 was about 1.04%. So we're still doing pretty good on absenteeism. And I would say that probably if we have to guess what increased, that it would probably be due to like cold and flu season coming in in third and fourth quarter, and that in conjunction with COVID-19, not really knowing what it is and being very cautious on that. So a couple of things that happened in 2021. Again, this list is not all-inclusive, but there was an RFP for a medical, dental, and vision provider, RFP for our liability insurance. We completed some new performance review documents, which I think is going to be a great improvement for the city and that talent management piece for employees. And then we had all the lovely ongoing things that you can see there for daily operations. But the one thing I pointed out that was pretty awesome is that we filled all vacant and posted positions, so that was really good for us. So a few things to come in 2022, excluding any of the reoccurring daily things. We will be looking to finalize updating our employee handbook, looking at completion of a 360 feedback survey, so we can have that go around for leadership and potentially some other positions. Obviously, with the new performance review process, we'll be looking at performance management a little bit more intently there. And then we'll be able to assess a full year onto the new benefit plan. So a couple of exciting things that are coming up for 2022. And that's all I have. So any questions, you can feel free to email hr@springhillks.gov or myself or give me a call. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Next, we have the...
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you may, I have a couple of comments with regard to the performance and the annual report of the Human Resources Manager Department. You just went through a list of a very large number of things that were done, and you are receiving a report from every department head and director with, in the last days. My comments are not meant to say that anyone else has not been excellent. My comment is to say, however, that every other person you've seen up here who has given a presentation of all that has been done by their department or division past year has a number of employees who work under them. Everything you just saw was completed by Monikaesha Jones. She had assistance sometimes. I might be Monikaesha's only employee, because every now and then I help out on the employee relations stuff. The number of employee relations matters for which outside council's assistance has been required has plummeted since Ms. Jones has been with the city. I should also tell you that the fact that the city filled every position is unbelievable right now, and for which she is doing a great deal of personal credit. And when you, when she says employee relations, that means not just a big investigation, but every single day, either an employee or a department head contacts Ms. Jones to ask her about a personal concern or about an employee performance issue or about a disciplinary issue, and she responds to those extremely well. So I don't, I just, I thought that you should know, from someone who does this kind of work as a living, how impressive she has been for you this year.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll move on to the 2021 end-of-year review by the Finance Department, and Ms. Armstrong, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and citizens. And perhaps I could just have Chuck give my report. Thank, thank you. I, I'm here to give the overview and the highlights of our Finance Department. Our Finance Department has five employees, Director of Finance, we have an accountant, payroll specialist, accounting clerk, and an accounting clerk for the utility billing. The accountant does general accounting-type activities. Our payroll specialist does the payroll, but she also does an abundance of minor tasks that are not related to payroll but are really related to our accounting functions. She processes special assessments, month-end reconciliations, and other types of things. Our part-time accounting clerk primarily does the accounts payable and miscellaneous accounts receivable activities. And then our accounting clerk for utility billing pretty much oversees the entire billing collections function of the water, sewer, and trash. Just hold it? Okay. So as far as highlights, and, and these are really just highlights, there are an abundant amount of details. Did I do that? So I am only touching on the highlights. Our utility billing bills for water, sewer, and trash. They do billing and customer service, initiate service requests, monitor accounts for delinquency, resolve billing issues, and set up payment arrangements. Some of the highlights of what we've accomplished in our billing area. This year, we implemented a roundup campaign for donations. This is where our residents, our customers, could sign up to round up their utility bills to the next dollar, and then we collected all that money in a fund for the whole year, and then we presented that to the Johnson County Utility Assistance, $379.59 in Roundup. We initiated mobile service orders for field service representatives. This is where our representative can initiate a service order. It goes to the operations staff, and they have an iPad. They can see all the information that they're needing to do that particular order and complete it, mark it as completed, and it'll come back to the office. it, mark it as completed, and it'll come back to the office. We audited all of our trash accounts with waste management. That's ensuring that the accounts that we have, that we are picking up trash for, the accounts that Waste Management believes that we have. We began a water, an audit of our water and sewer accounts, and that water and sewer audit will be ongoing. And this is something that we would like to, in our 2022 focus, I'll jump ahead, that we'd like to develop more of a continuous review process so that we are auditing or reviewing more things on a monthly basis with regard to water and sewer, just to assure that our billings are accurate. We implemented an automated telephone disconnects notification process. And I'm saying we did this. I had really nothing to do with this. The department did, and we have the one utility billing clerk, and she, for the most part, on her own, took initiative and dug into these projects and really took the steps to get them implemented. So when I say we, I oversaw, I answered questions, but for the most part, it was our utility billing representative that did this work. So I want to give her credit for that. But implemented automated telephone disconnect notification process. And through this process, they were able to reduce the monthly average of non-pay shut-offs from forty-two to twenty-two, and I think that's pretty significant. What that does is it sends an automated telephone call at a certain time of the month or whenever it's implemented, just to remind the customers that their bill is due. And then she'll actually follow up with customers periodically in that cycle and just to reduce those shut-offs, and I think that that's pretty important. We entered into seventy-five payment arrangements in 2021. In 2020, we had forty. And then there were twenty-one pledges of assistance by outside agencies. Some other statistics in just a few of the many activities, we averaged one thousand seven hundred monthly online payments. In 2020, we had it, it was fifteen hundred, so we increased by two hundred per month. And these online payments are payments that the customer goes to a third-party system that the city has set up, and they set up for themselves a date or just to automate their payment process. And so the city really does not have to have a hand in that. On the backend, we reconcile all those payments that come in, and we make sure that they get processed and posted to the customer's account. But this significantly reduces what we have to touch and what we physically process in the payment process each month. Seven hundred service actions. These are actions that we would have initiated, but these are all done by the outside personnel. And again, this is not everything that they do, but just a few things. In 2020, there were six hundred and seventy-three. In 2021, there were seven hundred, and these are rereads, downloading of meters, checking of links, high bill complaints, and those types of things. And that doesn't include the special meter audits that we had performed this year. And when we did the meter audits, a representative went out, they looked at the meters, and they actually took a picture so that we could see the number of dials and what type of a meter was in, in place. And then we went back to our billing software just to make sure that the billing was set up in compatibility and, and for what it should be as far as getting the right multiplier and usage. Okay, there were a hundred and eighty-three water meter sets, and those are both new builds and replacements. There were a hundred and twenty-six in 2020. One of the other things that we'd like to look at trying to do is there are quite a few old and outdated meters in our system. We would like to begin replacing some of those older meters that have a tendency to slow down in their metering and replace those with newer meters. So I put that statistic just so next year, perhaps, we could tell if we have met that or not. Other things that we would like to do in 2022 is more automated forms for, update those for automation and clarity. Perhaps the service application and disconnection forms, if we could have those online and updated. Okay, the next area is our accounting services. In accounting service, we have accounts payable, payroll, and miscellaneous accounts receivable. I'll tell you first about the smallest one, miscellaneous accounts receivable. That actually comes from the Community Development Department. They have a representative who goes out and looks for code violations. And when he finds those, and if there are any fines associated with what he has, that's a manual process that we do within our accounting department. And it, even though we only sent out thirty bills this year, it is quite a bit of manual work because they track it on an Excel spreadsheet, and then they track the payments. And it could certainly use some automation and streamlining. So that's one thing that we'll want to look at on our part. Okay. Also, in that department, we have accounts payable, financial reporting, payroll processing, and we do project management. So some of the things that we've done this year is we have tried to standardize more of our reporting and our closing processes for the month so that we feel as though we are doing certain processes. We have forms, we have spreadsheets, and we do them repeatedly. So it has increased our accuracy, and it sped up the ability of us to get that done. We've also improved on our project reporting. We are now including each month the balance of certain projects. And I did provide to you, I won't go too much into any of our financial reports, but as time goes on, we can deal with some of that more. We updated procedures for vendor ACH payments. Statest, statistics, we have six hundred and thirty-three active vendors. We issued two thousand six hundred and forty-two payments, EFT, and paper checks. We processed three thousand five hundred and ninety-two invoices, which averages three hundred a month. And I'll also note on that, we do get help processing those invoices from other departments. There's a Public Works Administrative Assistance that does some data entry, and also Community Development does some data entry on those invoices. Issued forty IRS 1099 forms, processed those thirty manual accounts receivable invoices, and a hundred and twenty-one W-twos. So I noted, I don't think Monica Keisha noted her pool employees. So we went up from sixty-nine W-twos in 2020, when the pool didn't open, to a hundred and twenty-one. So that shows how much activity that they will be having here right quick with the pool. Okay. Also in finance, we do debt issuance and benefit district management. So in, in this particular area, the city did maintain their A minus bond rating. We issued one point six two five in general obligation bonds. We had hoped to increase our debt rating this year. We did not, but we do have another bond issue that will be coming up this year so that we're hoping that with our 2021 results that we may be able to get upgraded. We developed a delinquency reporting for special assistance. Again, we didn't do it. That was done by actually our payroll specialist who manages the benefit districts. That number on what you're seeing is incorrect. It's three thousand thirty-nine benefit district accounts. And what happens is a benefit district is an area in the city where that geographical territory or there, they band together more or less to receive benefits. And those benefits are paid for by those members of that benefit district. So for example, I'll say we've got in Dayton Creek, we have a subdivision, and there were certain benefits improvements that were made to that. And so those benefits, such as roads, streets, sewer lines, would be paid for by the residents. And they're paid for, the city takes out a bond, and the bond is paid for by the residents over a period of time. Most of our newer ones are twenty years. Some of the earlier ones were ten years. So we manage those benefit districts, and as new districts come on, we bill them out. But if it starts out as one large parcel, and as it's platted, it splits into many, many different parcels. So we take that one big assessment and split it up according to square footage, and then it gets billed out to the county. So we did send three thousand thirty-nine accounts to the county this year. The two hundred and sixty-two accounts that were in Miami County, that is their last bill. So we do not have any more specials in the Southern Sanitary Sewer District in Miami County. Also this year, we did not take a lease or a loan on any new vehicles. The city was able to pay for those with cash out of our reserve funds. Looking to this year, we do have another debt issuance that we'll be doing. That's for the roundabout. We have a temporary note, and then the Dayton Creek for Benefit District. What, what we might like to do, what I would recommend doing is look for any opportunities that we could reduce our outstanding debt. Okay, budget. What the department does in regard to budget, we prepare the budget and do the certification, forecasting, and we also prepare the city's capital improvement program. So highlights budget-wise, we were in the second year of a two-year budget, and we also had the state's new revenue neutral rate come into effect. And the objective that we ended up trying to achieve was to achieve a revenue neutral rate. A revenue neutral rate is by definition where you receive the same or less in tax dollars this year than you did the prior year. But they measure that with your mill levy, which sometimes is a little bit tricky because you don't know exactly what your total assessed valuation is going to be. So at the, you don't know what your mill levy is going to be until November. So we're trying to do a budget ahead of time. The city did decrease their property tax proceeds that we received by eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. We attempted to be revenue neutral. We have two mill levies. One is a fire district, and those residents receive fire service. The other is no fire district, and they, they receive fire service, but not through the city. They are levied directly from the fire provider. So we were revenue neutral in our no-fire mill levy. That mill levy was twenty-three, twenty-one point two. We'd reduced it from the prior year by four point oh-six-two mills. We were not revenue neutral in the fire district. And the, just the reason for that is because it's difficult with that blended rate. We just couldn't bring down that fire mill levy low enough. And in our forecast, it appeared as though it was going to be revenue neutral, but then in the end, when the final assessed valuations came out, they were different than what we had based our estimates on, but we were close. In 2022, I would like to propose an increase in our reserve. We currently have a reserve of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When you see the financial results, the city did work very hard, and if there is money to be designated to an additional reserve, I would certainly like to suggest that. We'll prepare the 2022 to 2027 capital improvement program. We'll be preparing a three- or a five-year forecast, and we'll certify the city's 2023 annual operating budget. Okay, this is just something that I've thrown in. We don't talk about this too much. We have the Mayor's Tree Fund. We collected six thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and there were five services that received the benefit of those. And I just listed those for you to review. Those checks will actually go out this week. Okay, the final item that I wanted to share with you is general fund budget performance. And this really is pretty impressive, what we were able to do as far as the difference between our actual results and the budgeted revenue. And this was because of all of the departments banding together. There was a significant amount of personnel shortage. I don't know if you call it shortage. Our manpower was reduced below budgeted levels, and that did allow for some excess revenue to come in. But when you look at the budget, this is our general fund only. The ad valorem taxes, those are our property taxes, is the top. That, that was pretty much right on budget. Our budget variance was twenty-four thousand dollars. That is forty-one percent of our revenue collected. Sales tax went up significantly from budget. Sales tax, if you look in the third column, budget variance, was almost seven hundred thousand dollars over what we had budgeted. That is thirty-six point eight-five percent of our revenue. And then the other revenue that the city takes in was twenty-two percent. So you can see in that our revenues were almost a million dollars over what we had budgeted. Our expenditures, where we achieved significant budget variance, was in the personnel services. We had built, we had budgeted four million five hundred thousand, and those expenditures were three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine. One thing that I do want to point out in this is it was not personnel only, but this is the RFP that we had mentioned earlier that was taken out for healthcare. There were some significant decreases in our healthcare cost from what we had budgeted prior. We were, if you remember, we were in a two-year budget cycle. So we budgeted for our healthcare probably three years ago. I'd have to count back, but we were able to take advantage of those lower costs in this budget. So as far as our expenditures for department, you'll see that all of those did go over what we had budgeted for. On the detail report that I gave you, you can see how each department ended up. But some of those commodities, those are items that we purchase, contractual are services that we purchase, and then our capital outlay and debt service and transfers is where we transferred some money to Park District, I believe. But in the end, we had budgeted actually for a deficit. And what the city has done in the past is they budget revenue, and they had rolled in any carryforward into their budget, and then they had budgeted to spend that money that they had rolled in. So as our budget was set up, we were budgeted to decrease, to spend two hundred and eight thousand dollars more than what we had taken in that year. So when we looked at this, and what our new objective was beginning this year, was when we have carryforward, not to roll those into our operating expenses, to try to match our revenues for the current year and our expenditures for the current year, and leave those carryforwards from operating revenues for special purchases, things that council may know that we need. We've heard that we need stro, streets. We, we do need a lot of infrastructure-type services, and a lot of those are coming up. So the objective is to try and prepare a budget where your current year revenues meet your current year expenses, and then you'll see in that second line that the city did that very, very well. So applause to all these people. I did give each of you a, a current updated financial snapshot. The numbers that I presented to you are in that with a lot more information. At any time, if anyone wants to go over that individually, I'm glad to sit down and talk to you about what, what those are and where those numbers come from. I did also post that on the website, but this is preliminary. Our audit, I didn't mention audit in anything that we do, but we do coordinate the city's audit. The auditors will be The auditors will be coming in on April first for the fieldwork. And then very near to that point, we'll know if we have adjustments that we need to do to these numbers. So these numbers really won't be finalized until after the audit is over. Um, I also gave you a copy of the outstanding debt. I don't think I had given that to you before. So just for your own information, and that also is on the website. I think that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I was gonna make one quick comment. You breezed over it like it wasn't a big deal, but I think it's a really big deal and I think it needs to be shouted from the rooftops because I don't know of anybody else that did what you did, uh, lowering the mill levy from the previous year. I think that's-
Well, I didn't do it, but I got the pleasure of reporting it. I'll just tell you that.
To, to you and everyone that worked on that, I, I still think that's a huge, huge accomplishment. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
And I think Ms. Armstrong and her whole team did an excellent job on the budget. I think it was a long, hard process and I think the end result benefited everyone, so.
And we're about ready to start it again. So we'll get more fun and games. So thank you all.
Well, I have a little bit too. So, good job on everything. It looks good. Um, a couple of things I wanted to touch on. You'd mentioned you wanted to, or you recommend that we raise the, uh, reserve budget or the reserve. What amount were you kind of thinking?
Well, um, to a million or a million two-fifty, somewhere in there. Now, but actually, I really think, given what we're carrying forward and, and I'm gonna go back to, I'll go to this sheet that, um, I don't think I posted this on the board, but our general fund, we had a beginning balance that we rolled in and th- these are the handouts that I gave you, and it was a million dollars. And then with our revenues and expenditures, we added the one million, one hundred and thirteen, I think, to it. So our fund balance, and it, it can change. This may not be the end number, but it will be upwards of two million dollars. So we have already stated that seven hundred and fifty thousand of that is reserved for, um, a reserve. And that reserve, at this point, we don't propose to spend it at all, but it would be something if we go down the road and if there was an economic downturn and if the city needed a cash reserve, they would have that available. So what, I would propose, if we reserved at least a million dollars, then there would be another million dollars to do other things.
That's kind of what I was, that million seems like what we would probably make sense for kind of what our revenue is, to be in, you know, that, that range of a million bucks. I don't know if we need to go a million two-five, but I think a million. I don't know if, we need to do any research on that or whatnot.
Well, if we get another million next year, we could raise it again, I would suppose, yeah.
And then the other thing, um, obviously you talked about attacking the debt a little bit, which I'm in agreeance with. I know there's a couple on here that I would probably start with personally, but could you put something together to tell us, or do you have anything in mind that?
I, I do not, but I-
Okay, I would say put something together maybe that we can look at. Cause won't that help if we can maybe knock out a, a good portion of this with our rating a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
I, I guess my personal feeling is I feel right now that the city is sitting in a pretty good position. But those situations could change. Um, I was not here then, but I do re- know that there was a time when the city had to go to, um, KDHE and they had a fifty thousand dollar payment and had to ask for a grace period on that. So I would hope that we could use some of these, um, reserves as reserves so that we position ourselves in the future.
But I would say like this USDA one, this one's kind of ridiculous with what the interest is compared to the loan amount and how much it's changed in the last ten years. I think we've only paid it down like thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars. So looking at stuff like that, just seeing, hey, where can we save? Get the biggest bang for our buck as far as saving on interest and, you know, payment. And then also on the lease purchases that we still have outstanding, could you find out kind of what the actual vehicles are for this? So we can see if these are amortized probably properly? Cause it looks to me like they might be amortized too long.
I can send a list of those and it'll show the vehicle and how, the age of it and how long.
Yeah, cause sometimes these just look like these might be, I mean, typically on vehicles, you don't want to amortize it for five or 10 years if you, if the useful life is only that or are they longer than what the useful life is?
I'll send that out to everyone.
Okay. I was just gonna say, if you could send all that stuff to the whole government.
Yep, I'll send.
To find out.
Yep, I'll send that out.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is citizen participation, uh, period. And I just want to remind everybody that, um, this period, we want everybody that wants to speak to have an opportunity to speak. I would ask that you guys limit your time to a few minutes to allow everyone to have time to speak that wants to and then also to gi- give respect to everyone here and their families and their time. Um, once that citizen participation period is ended, I would ask that everyone please, um, remain quiet so we can conduct business, which is what we're elected to do. If everybody's shouting from the audience, shouting questions, shouting comments, that prohibits us from conducting business like, like, because this ultimately is a business meeting for the city and for the citizens. And we can't do that properly with constant interruptions. Um, and with that, I will move on to citizen participation. First person on the list is Mr. Brad Zar. And if you could just state your name and your address, as always, please.
Uh, Brad Zar, two zero seven oh three South Skyview Lane. This won't be a twenty-minute, I promise. All right. So tonight I want to begin with, uh, bringing up Two Hundred and Seventh Street. As you know, the number of homes being proposed, uh, north of Woodland Ridge and, uh, south of Brookwood Farms are being very dense. Uh, that's causing that expansion of Two Hundred and Seventh Street to support the additional traffic. Um, the density's gonna worsen with RP three versus RP one or R one. So it was brought to our attention in the last planning meeting, a benefit district may be created to help pay for Two Hundred and Seventh Street upgrades. So a benefit district, okay? Um, was council aware of that? Okay, and why wasn't this brought up in the last council meeting, uh, before the vote occurred? Um, this would yet again increase taxes for the Spring Hill resident that already pays the highest taxes in Johnson County. Could this cost be offloaded to the developer? Okay, so Dayton Creek has a benefit district, as we just saw. I want to give an explanation of how to help put into perspective for everyone and how it would affect your finances. On a home similar to mine, their taxes are as follows. Uh, year one, regular property taxes, approximately six thousand a year. Year two, regular property taxes plus partially assessed, an additional two thousand in property taxes. Year three, regular property taxes plus fully assessed, four thousand additional. So year four through twenty, they're paying ten thousand dollars a year in taxes on their home, so your mortgage. So after year three, a homeowner would be paying around an additional four thousand a year, equating to another three hundred and thirty-three dollars a month in taxes. If this benefit district runs for twenty years, this will cost the homeowner an extra eighty thousand over the twenty-year period just to drive on Two Hundred and Seventh Street. To give another view, I'd be paying eight hundred and thirty-three dollars a month just in property taxes. Since city staff did not provide us the cost of Two Hundred and Seventh Street in our core requests, I use Dayton Creek as a hypothetical. If Woodland Ridge, or sorry, if Woodland and Ridge you need updated, will there be a benefit district for those since they kind of all three tie together because of the traffic amongst them? So who will pay? Future residents of Spring Hill or a combination of new and current residents? I recall city staff said this rezoning proposal wouldn't affect the current residents financially. Value comes in many shapes and forms. Okay, how do you think ten thousand in taxes affects the resale value of your home when someone takes a look at what they're going to be buying? So Mr. Burkey, you stated one of your goals as mayor was find ways to fund repairs without raising taxes. So that would be an action item, I think, should be addressed. All right, I want to shift gears for a minute. No more negative here, we're gonna have fun. Um, I want to hold, what I hold in my hand is the, uh, community newsletter that come out this week. I do like that, so thanks for sending that. If you don't mind humor me for a minute, I'd like to ask you each a question or two. So Mayor Burkey, it states here you own and operate a construction company. Okay, when running this type of business, I assume you have to purchase many tools? Okay, do you run out and buy the first tool you see or do you research first? Do you cost, safety, quality before making a decision? I'll make an assumption that you have employees. I'm willing to bet you vetted them before you hired them, correct? You probably also spoke to their references to ensure they'll be, they'll represent you properly. Uh, Mrs. Roth, I'm familiar with the automotive repair shop that you run. Let me ask you this, before setting the price of an oil change, one would assume you take many things into consideration. For example, your cost of purchasing, purchasing the oil, mechanics' time, volume of the oil changes, and many other factors that come into play for the final price, correct? Okay, so Ms. North, Mrs. North and Ms. Van Hooij, I'm gonna kind of lump you into one. It states that you each have children. My question to you is, think back to when you bought your first car seat or helped your child decide which college they should attend. I'm willing to bet you put a lot of time and research into the matter so you would make the best possible decision. Mr. Pill, you work for, work for or slash direct the Spring Hill Recreation Commission. Have you thought about offering pickleballs, one of your rec programs? I hear it's one of the fastest-growing activities out there. I'm willing to bet if one person requests you offer pickleball, you don't instantly say yes. Before doing so, I bet there's a process you follow to gather community interests, the costs associated with the program, and a multitude of other things. That probably sound right? Okay, Mr. Young, um, it says you're a business banker and lender. Kind of got that from the finance talk we had just had here, so. Uh, my question to you is, before you give a potential client a loan, do you perform a background check on them? For example, what's their income, history of paying back the loan? A lot of other things to ensure you have done your due diligence. I'd venture to guess if the client did default on a loan, your work would be scrutinized to ensure you did all the proper checks before approving the loan. Okay, so you may be thinking, Brad, where are you going with all this? Here's where I'm going. The city staff is asking you to make a decision without providing counsel all the material necessary to make the best decision. Think about why you would vote yes to an item that will affect thousands of people, cost the city millions of dollars to implement, without first gathering all the information that is pertinent to the rezoning being proposed. As you can recall, we did a core request for ten items and did not receive any factual information on how this would affect the community and the city as a whole. Traffic study, safety, property values, how it'd be paid for, infrastructure, flooding, the list goes on. So why would you deviate from your day-to-day decision-making process when voting this evening? Ask yourself, can I truly say that the city provided me all the information I could, so I can make the best decision possible for the residents and the concerns they've brought forth? Okay, finally, in the last meeting, many council members stated this was a tough decision. This is your conscience throwing up a red flag telling you you're missing something. Voting as an elected official should be easy when you do two things. Vote with the majority of the people, have all the facts and documents you need to make the best decision. I don't recall any residents in the last month here supporting the rezoning. And two, no new studies have been provided by city staff to answer the concerns of the residents, only additional facts showing how the rezoning makes it worse for the residents. Example, a benefit district. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next we have, next on the list is Bill Peterman.
Bill Peterman, nineteen four thirty-one West Two Hundred Street. A concerned citizen of Spring Hill. And this is just my opinion. Uh, at the last meeting, I watched the, uh, city attorney raise his voice to one of the, uh, council people and say, we need a yes or no vote. That wasn't her, all of her options. He didn't give her all her options. Uh, I was a little disappointed. I thought it was a scare tactic, uh, to try to get a certain vote. I was kind of, a- and at that, at this point, I believe maybe he was, doesn't have the best interest of the city employees or the city council at heart. Uh, maybe he cares more about, uh, a Missouri developer than he does us. Because I didn't think that was the right way to attack people. You guys have only got hell or, or six people there. Six, yeah, six people there. And together, you don't have two years seniority. So you're all brand-new to this. And that's why all of a sudden, they want to put a development in and put it in different than any other place in Spring Hill. Does this look like a, a formal, uh, layout to a, any other place in Spring Hill? Do you see a lot of fourplexes running around here? I think they're taking advantage of your young, uh, time and, uh, trying to get something new in. And then twenty years from now, people say, oh yeah, I remember when so-and-so was in the council. They let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Debbie Dominic.
Hi, it's Debbie Dominic, one nine two nine nine West Two Hundred Ninth Street. I live in Spring Hill in Woodland Ridge and I've lived here since two thousand and six. I am a Spring Hillian. My kids have been raised in the district. They are Spring Hillians. I shop the downtown area and I support small business. My outfit came from Lee's. Chip, I used to buy wood from you. Diana, you fixed my van. Brian, my kids have been involved in the rec. Uh, two kids are lifeguards, Aaron and RJ. My son, Zo, worked at Price Chopper. My other son, Lawrence, he worked for, uh, Dana Stewart, who runs a commercial cleaning business. I buy gas at Casey's, ice cream at Sonic. I just got my toes done at Tip Top last week. I walk our neighborhood and talk to neighbors who are now friends. We are Spring Hillians. We are the city. Brian, I voted for you. Chip, your friend and a neighbor, I love your kids and your wife. Diana, I don't know you very well, but I do respect you. Joe, I haven't gotten a, a chance to meet you yet, but I voted for you also. Chad, I appreciate your time this week in talking with me and I look forward to getting to know you better. And I apologize, I don't know you at all, but you're very pretty. That's all. I don't mean that to sly your, your vote tonight, but, um, um, anyways, you have all been firmly instructed by the Planning Commission to approve RP three. You seem threatened by a lawsuit by the developer to approve RP three. Are you okay with being puppets appointed to do, to act, to perform as certain others involved in this proposed development instruct you to do? Or are you here representing the city? We, who are the city, your neighbors, your friends, your colleagues, your constituents? Your constituents had you been rightfully elected. And I, it's not your fault, just putting it out there. RP three, as opposed, hurts our city. It hurts our city. By some I have heard or been told that this issue is not a hill that they would die on. It's fine. At least be willing to vote as your neighbors, the city is begging you to do. Take a stand for what is right, what your gut is saying. Cause waves. Do not simply go with the flow because you're newly appointed instead of rightfully elected. Cause waves. Make a difference. Show you have a voice and you're willing to stand up for your city, your friends, your neighbors, your family. We, the city, who live here and will be affected by the approval of RP three. You have a choice. You have a choice. You get to vote how you believe is best. You have the reasons and justification of why RP three is not okay in this location. Be brave, be strong. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next we have Daniel Hawkman.
And the laptop's not approved for presentation, so, no panic. Uh, Daniel Hawkman, two oh seven one one South Skyview Lane. Uh, I just want to start by saying that more than a hundred citizens in three subdivisions in the surrounding community have come before this council and the Planning Commission to voice our opposition to rezoning of this property, RP three, four times. Uh, and this is the fourth time I have spoken on it, spoken on it. During these meetings, this council and planning commission have been told different stories about what is going on with this property. At the original planning meeting, we were shown slab houses, zero fronts. But when Mr. Burton came to the city council, he showed you three car garages and basements with bedrooms. Mr. Burton- Mr. Burton also showed a map of Dayton Creek and how close the houses were, and that these multifamilies were next to million-dollar homes. That's not affordable housing. These were three-car garages, $300,000 to $400,000. We never found million-dollar properties when we were looking. The highest we saw sold at $700,000 located on 40 acres, not a subdivision. Further, the subdivision was separated by a road and acreage, and what you are proposing is 200 feet away from us. The city has not done its due diligence in answering citizens' questions. You've had many people concerned about flooding. Citizens telling you that they were having flooding issues now. We asked for a third party to look into this. All we have heard is from Developers Engineering Firm. And he said probably the most truce thing, uh, that I've heard, and that is, you're going to have to prove that it was his subdivision that caused the flooding and not something else if you want to hold us accountable. That's what we're dealing with. Comparisons in properties that are not similar. Comparisons of multifamily housing that is not even remotely similar. Saying that are, saying there are multifamily housing sections in similar areas when they are not a failure to justify what they are doing other than to just keep saying it and hope you don't catch what is wrong or tell you to just pass this zoning and they will prevent them from changing their minds. From one meeting to the next, we never know what is going to be said. Ms. Roth, thank you for abstaining. Thank you for abstaining from the vote at the last council meeting. I admire your stance, even when the city attorney was trying to convince you to do something different. And that's what was happening. My question is for the others who live in Woodland Ridge. Why are you not abstaining? You should. Uh, has the city attorney talked to you about voting? Will Ms. Roth vote tonight, and how will she vote? And for that matter, those of you that are associated with realtors, realty companies or construction companies, you should abstain as well. Your vote is a, has a personal interest attached to it. You've had diversity and potential lawsuits thrown at you. Lawsuits for what? We've not heard this. Have you been advised by laws, uh... Have you been advised of lawsuits by the citizens that come from this, from us? Plenty of things have been admitted to on videos having been done, uh, done wrong. At one point, you were told it does not matter anymore. It's already passed. The example is the signage that ran out of orange paper and could not find a place to buy anymore. Does breaking the law now become okay if you are not caught immediately doing it? It's been broken. What about the court requests that have gone unanswered? I asked for the link to one of the zoning maps I have only ever seen in these meetings, and I still have not received that link. Announced, and I even announced my email to the whole world, or at least those watching. It was announced in the last planning meeting that an RFP was approved for reviewing for future zoning. Why is there a rush to this when so many people are against it and a review is in the works? I would encourage this council to remember the collective citizens of Spring Hill. Remember the words of an Overland Park City Council member, Jeff Cox, who recently, in a similar situation, is quoted as saying, "Elected officials should defer to the will of neighbors who oppose the project." If you do this, we will continue to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Boswell.
I see Boswell, 504 North Jackson Street, which is right over there, not what we're discussing. However, I do have some few, a few concerns and questions on that. You know, I've always talked about the responsible growth of the, of the whole city and community. And as you hear, there's going to be some growing pains. But just because of developer, and this is what I took away from the Planning Commission, is just because the developer fits the criteria of our charter doesn't, you know... That's all they were going on at the Planning Commission. Well, it fits the criteria. Just because it fits the criteria doesn't mean it's necessary or right to put that there. The other thing is, is infrastructure issues, okay? We have already, all of us know there's infrastructure issues in this city. Now, we're supposedly adding another 1,200-plus residents or possibly residents to the area. And we've already replaced a sewage pump that I know of recently, and those weren't cheap. Uh, we're going to probably end up having to replace more of those pumps more frequently because of obvious more use. Those things haven't been taken into consideration either. Is the developer planning on doing, uh, is, is... Things that the citizens and things that you guys might want to know is if the developer is planning on kicking in any of this infrastructure or are they just tying into our existing infrastructure? Uh, I, I, I believe you guys deserve all of the information before you guys make a decision on yes or no to this product, project. The other thing I have to say is, uh... You know, after, if it is approved, does the council or does the city manager have a say in the density? Can it be adjusted? Or is it up to the developer at that point? If you approve the RP3, do you, does the city itself have any room or leeway to say, "Wait a minute, let's not do sixplexes. Let's stay with duplexes type thing. Let's expand each lot a little bit and cut down on the number of lots." Or is that all up to the developer? And finally, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not an attorney on this one, but the council also has the right to table the vote, uh, to allow for further, uh, explanations and into the issues and questions they may have. Is that correct? Mr. Denly? I didn't hear you. Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, Mayor Jill Burkey, I was asking, just to make sure it was, it was correct, that, uh, the council has the right to table, uh, a vote on this at this time until they are able to get more pertinent and prudent information and how it will affect all of us, including each and every one of you that live in this town as well, so that you can make your best educated decision. I know you've had a lot of studying going on about this, but I think there's a lot of questions that still haven't been answered and should be, and, and you might find benefit to yourself to get those answers. So you have an explanation for your reasoning to vote yea or nay. Is that correct?
Um, I think that's something you probably, if you would like an answer to that, I think you could submit that directly to, to the attorney.
Is that correct?
Mayor, you're asking me to answer the legal question asked by...
Normally, I would not be yes. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead.
Yes, the council can certainly table any item that's in front of them.
Why wasn't that a suggestion last meeting?
I believe that it was listed as a possibility, and I think it was listed as continuance. But if I'm mistaken, I, I just, I, I don't know.
I was under the impression that it was either you had to vote yea or nay last meeting. You couldn't table it or anything. Or perhaps the councils, being as new as they are, didn't know they had that option. As you being the council should have led them down the idea of having all options on the table. Anyway, that is kind of all I have to say, gentlemen and ladies, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. That is all the people we have on the list. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to step up and speak? Go ahead, Mr. B, you can come forward. If you could go ahead and come forward to the microphone so everybody can hear you. I know we probably could hear you from back there, but...
All my ears coaching. I figured, I throw my voice well enough. I just had...
That way, that way the people watching online can hear you.
Yeah. I just got one question. Do we still owe 13 and a half million? We're still 13 and a half million in debt? We're not 750,000 in the, in the, okay. I'm, I'm kind of sure we're still 13 and a half million in debt. We're not 75,000, uh, in the, in the good right now.
I'm actually not sure what you're speaking of, but if you would like to, we could talk...
Okay. If you want to, if you want to send an email directly to her?
Yeah. I just, I just know the city's not...
Thank you. All right, if there's no one else that would like to speak, we'll go ahead and close the citizen participation period, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I just entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the adjusted changes that we specified earlier.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries 500. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to the formal council action. And the first item on the agenda is to consider approval of board appointments. And just to clarify, these are appointments of people that are already existing on these boards and are, uh, would like to, and their period has ended, and they would like to go ahead and be reappointed to the same position that they hold now. And so, um, we have the Cemetery Board, the Parks and Advisory Board, and then the Planning Commission. And so with the Cemetery Board, I'm going to go ahead and reappoint Mrs. Susan Crawford to fill her position she currently holds, Miss Joy Rose to fulfill her same position, and then Mrs. Kim Deffenball. So we appoint those three back to their current positions. And those are three-year terms. And on the Parks and Advisory Board, we have three vacancies. And we will go ahead and open those, uh, positions up for two weeks for letters of intent, letters of interest. And then on the Planning Commission, we have one vacancy. And we'll open that up, same thing, for two weeks for letters of interest to serve in that position. And then I'll also go ahead and reappoint Mary Dobson and Josh Earhart to refill their positions. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reappointments of all those members I stated.
I move to approve the appointments, as mentioned by Mayor Burkey, to the Cemetery Board, Parks Advisory Board, and Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the council? If not, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 500. Next item on the agenda is to consider appointment of Human Resources Director. And just to clarify, that's, uh, Miss Moniquee Sh. Jones. Uh, we're, um, proposing to move her from manager to director of the Human Resources Department. And I just entertain a motion to approve the director position.
I move to approve your movement of, uh, Miss Jones to the director for the Human Resources Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I believe it's you're appointing, the motion is you're, uh, nominating her to be appointed to the Human Resources Director, just to clarify.
Yep, I'll reclarify that.
Sure, thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Moniquee Sh. Jones as director from the manager position.
I'm sorry, I thought I said appointed, but apparently I didn't. I'm sorry.
I think you just said moved.
Okay. Uh, I would like to motion to approve the appointment of Miss, uh, Jones, uh, to the director position for the Human Resources Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 500. Next, uh, item on the agenda is to consider approval to purchase six trucks for the Public Works Department. And with that, Mr. Messer, you have the floor.
Good evening. What this proposal is basically trying to do is we have, uh, six vehicles we'd like to replace. I think when I first started back last year, three of the vehicles we're talking about was on the agenda, and they were never replaced. Uh, part of the reason we're looking at this, our, our fleet is pretty old. Our average age of a truck is 16 years old. The newest one is six years old. We have immediate needs because these vehicles are, um... Numerous issues with them. The costs are rising. What we're wanting to do, I'm not asking for six new trucks. It's not the goal, because I don't want to try to spend that kind of money. But there are some opportunities out there to utilize... Well, you guys, I don't know if you know or not, I'm retired government, uh, federal government park service. And we used a program through the park service. We leased vehicles from an organization called GSA. And so these vehicles that are coming up for sale, I can tell you, I know the history of them, even though I don't know the vehicles. They were well-maintained fleet vehicles. If you didn't do your oil change on time, you get, you turned your truck back. They monitored. So we're looking at some of these, uh, high, to me, were, they're, they're not high mileage. Some of them are six, eight, 10 years old, 20,000 miles on them. Because they turn them back by mileage and by years, irregardless. So, and there's also other opportunities out there, uh, through the state. Bassinaw has a, uh, equipment replacement program where they turn vehicles in after two or three years. So we're looking at trying to replace six of our older trucks that are causing a lot of trouble, um, with six different vehicles. Three utility box and three pickups. Uh, some employees have taken to driving their own vehicles because we don't have enough to go around. Since I've been here since June, we've sold or red-tagged three vehicles, three trucks. So we're short on vehicles. So mainly what we're looking for, this proposal is to... And the reason it's coming to you the way it is is we can't act fast enough. If I have to bring you a vehicle that we'd like to bid on, because by the time you have a meeting, you give me permission to bid up to 30,000, the vehicle's gone. For example, I looked today, there was four or five very nice, low-mileage used vehicles, but I couldn't bid on them because I didn't have the approval. So we're looking for the approval to create $180,000 out of, uh, the vehicle replacement, the equipment reserve or the replacement fund to authorize the city administrator and working with us, or however he wants to do it, to be able to bid on these vehicles without losing the opportunity by having to come back here and say, "We want to bid on this, and this is what we've looked..." So we want to, to be able to set a number that we could bid no more than this and yet be able to, um, start replacing some of these vehicles. I mean, um, it would help all the way around if we could... I mean, the whole fleet is old and aging. I mean, 16 years old is the average. So it's time we had to, to start dealing, I mean, we had one. The taillight fell out. We had to duct tape it back in after we couldn't find it because the, the metal around it's rotted away. I mean, we've got our money out of these vehicles. So, I mean, I think I even found one down there. They've taken a pillow and duct taped it to the seat. But we just don't want to put new seats in there. The dashes are gone out of them, the cracks in the body and the frame, so. The alternative, um... What we're looking for is a motion to approve the city administrator to locate at an auction site and purchase six trucks for the Public Works Department at a cost not to exceed 180,000 total. I mean, some of them, these utility beds might go for 30, 35,000, but the average or the maximum would not exceed 30. Hopefully, much less. Deny this idea or action, or send it back to staff for another, uh, for more research. We'd like, the staff recommends a motion to approve the city administrator to be able to locate and utilize these, um, used vehicles to replace the fleet. So, any questions on that, or...
I would anticipate with the average age being 16 years old, there's probably a lot of maintenance that were occurring, trying to keep these old things up and going.
I think we put in 4,000 or 5,000 this week alone in two vehicles. So they're, they've served their purpose. And like I said, we're short now. There's people, um, driving their own or we're passing around vehicles. Some of the vehicles that are being used are not being used for, uh... For example, we have one employee using his own truck because he has to carry a snow blower. I ran it. So when the storm comes in, he switches his own truck to carry the snow blower because he can't fit it in the back of a Jeep. So, and then we have a sedan being used to, uh, do janitorial work. So we'd like to reutilize some of this stuff and, and, and the utility vehicles, uh, the beds are... and the utility vehicles, uh the beds are breaking, falling. They're, they were the ones identified two years ago to be replaced, but never came together on the price or the, like I said, I'm not looking for new, I'm just looking for some good vehicles. I had, there was a couple that I watched go by that I didn't have time to get anything done on. They were one-ton trucks coming off an airbase with sanders and plows on them, which would have been ideal for us, because that's what we do. So we just want the ability to do this.
I assume they're not worth much, but what would we do with the old vehicles? Would we just?
We'll go back to Purple Wave like we did, the, the one with the no floorboards we sold on Purple Wave. We sold two patrol cars. Now that we brought that program back, you'd be surprised what people will buy. So.
We probably don't usually buy six at a time, and I, I don't think you're planning on buying all six. It's just as the auctions hit and the opportunities there. So, once we get all six of new ones in, old stuff auctioned off and out, how, you know, we, we wouldn't be in this situation if we had done a better job of replacing over the years. How much time do you think this buys us in order, before we have to start replacing again? Like, are we looking at two, three years, maybe four?
Those, those, they're low mi- we're looking at low-mileage ones. We're probably gonna get ten years out of those easily. But the problem coming up is the dump trucks are in horrid shape.
Right, and those are the expensive ones.
Those are the expensive ones, but those we would probably look at more uh capital improvement. Uh instead, well, we would, could even use, utilize this process as well. Because again, the government has its procedures. On the larger trucks, ten years or seventy thousand miles, whichever comes first, and it's out the door. And I've watched some go by, stake beds, one, two-ton stake beds with fifteen thousand miles on them. Yeah, they're ten years old, but we get ten years out of them. We've saved the city a, a lot of money in capital outlay upfront. So, that's what the goal is, is something we can use and utilize, but not cost an arm and a leg. Oh, I'd love all-new trucks, but I don't think um we can get by without.
How long do you anticipate the process of getting all six would take? I mean, are we talking a month? Are we talking six months?
Six at the most. Uh the, the big key question is, one of these days, this chip shortage will abate, and then all of a sudden, the deliveries will be accelerated, and the market's gonna be flooded with these used vehicles coming online. I think we usually, at, at least once a month, two or three stake beds go across. They're in pretty good shape. And I'm not looking for the ones in Maine or Virginia or Washington. I'm just mainly looking at Nebraska, Kansas, Oklahoma.
Is that, do we have to go get them?
Yeah, we would have to go get them. In some cases, might even go and inspect them and do a live auction bid on them. But uh it's, I don't anticipate it'll take very long because there's some really nice ones coming up across. And I don't anticipate it, it'll cost on the average as much as we're asking, but I would rather be safe than sorry.
Uh is there a pretty high demand for these right now?
All used vehicles are ridiculously high right now.
I assume so, but.
Yeah. But I think we can still uh by careful selection, do a good job on it.
So these aren't included in your current budget?
They, it's coming, not the budget, it's coming out of the equipment reserve that's in the budget.
That's what I'm saying, where you didn't have any kind of budget to do vehicles over the last two years?
Like a capital outlay account that we pick? No, we don't have that. It's not set up that way.
But we do have the reserves out of your budget in place.
Yes.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Burton? Sure.
Yeah.
Additional questions, I may want to have to answer.
So we have this reserved already in a separate budget for?
We have a reserve set aside for um this, although it does exceed it by about twenty thousand. So what we were doing is, before we do a transfer and before we go through the entire amount on that, we would come to the council for a transfer.
After each purchase?
Well, when, if, if, what we're hoping to get, all these bought with the amount that's in our budgetary authority right now. If it ink, what, about twenty thousand short? Anyway, the, I think we're around twenty thousand short.
So about one sixty?
So, yes, so might be one fifty, but whenever we hit that, then we would go to you because we come to you for every transfer. We have the money in, in other accounts set aside. You know, we set aside six hundred thousand this year for uh special projects. There's, there's a lot, I mean, we have money set aside. Uh we just were very cautious on, and all this just hit at one time. You guys saw the pictures that he provided.
Well, yeah, we probably just let the equipment go a little too long, like we pushed it too far.
Had to, out of necessity, it wasn't because they absolutely wanted to.
So are there six vehicles already kind of tagged saying these are the ones we're replacing?
I think there's four tagged to replace, and then additional two. Um it, uh Mr. Messer talked about, we are utilizing, or employees are utilizing their own personal vehicles to accomplish the job that they're hired to do. And so uh so a couple of them uh will be additional vehicles. And to answer your question on, you know, what timeline this will give us, it uh with PubWorks and we already have a good list, a good inventory of, of vehicles. And we will start a replacement program. So it might be next year that we have to replace a dump truck. Uh where all of us are getting ready to go into the budget uh review, and that will all be brought up in budget review. So it might be a case where it might be a case, I'm, I apologize, it might be a case where uh we buy no pickups next year, and then we, anyway, we get the re, I just don't want anyone to think that there won't be, there might be a necessity to purchase equipment next year.
Yeah, I, I was more getting at, like, normally, these would probably come up in the CIP budget.
Well, uh, yeah, capital improvement project, uh they, that's what they used it for, uh the previous administration. We actually want to budget correctly, saying, this is equipment reserve fund. This is what we look at replacing uh next year or the year after. And then using the CIP for what we really feel like it should be, capital improvement streets, sidewalks, projects of that nature.
Not equipment.
That's correct, because a lot of times in the past, it would get put into CIP. And as we saw, there were, there was equipment bought, but no projects happened. So if we separate this off and, and get it in here, similar to what we have right now, um then we'll have a good idea, and, and we'll go the direction that the governing body wants us to.
Isn't the budget review coming up?
Oh, yes. As a matter of fact, we're already in works, and um Luann was kind of waiting for her presentation. And then information will start flowing out to you and uh start making decisions, especially with uh the council that is new at it, you know.
Pat, if I might interrupt uh for a minute?
Thank you, Mr. Messer, and thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Mr. Burton.
Counselor, to clarify on um two items. One, the this action or the, that is being requested of you, the authorization to spend up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars replacing these trucks. It, it, there's, there's two issues here. We want to make sure that you understand and are authorizing both. One is the expenditure of uh up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to accomplish this. Also, this is brought before the council, before the purchase, for the purpose of authorizing the city to act, to authorizing the city administrator or um the uh Public Works Director to submit a bid that may be in excess of what would otherwise be permitted their authority under the purchasing policy. The city is specifically asking for the authority in advance, and being up entirely transparent. Um city staff want to be transparent, but given the chip shortage, given the impact upon the market that that chip shortage has had, and given that city council meetings are every two weeks roughly, it maybe di- it, the city can't, the Public Works Director doesn't want to lose an opportunity, and neither, neither does Mr. Burton want to lose an opportunity for the city to acquire an outs- a, a, a piece of equipment that's in high demand at, at a below-market cost um or at market cost, which is pretty tough as it is, without this authorization. So there are two things that you are, that you are authorizing here. City to spend up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in acquiring these vehicles, and authorization for a one-time expenditure which may exceed the authority under the purchasing policy um that would otherwise be given outside of the councils uh without council approval. And I wanted to make that clear, and, and uh Luann, uh uh who brought that, excuse me, um Ms. Armstrong, I, I brought that to my attention, and I want to make clear that that is part of what you are authorizing. Um and council member appeal to answer part of your question, and I think, to be clear, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a reserve budget for, in a reserve fund for this purpose. That's already been budgeted. Now, there are other funds budgeted. The city has other funds budgeted as needed in light of the, but the budget for this sort of wa- was anticipated around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's when they did the budget, which is a process that, as Ms. Armstrong indicated, you're gonna start working on again next month. I don't think a year ago we knew how bad the chip shortage was gonna be, or how long it would last. So if we need to move money from one fund to another for anything that goes over, if, if the city does get to a hundred and fifty or to a hundred and eighty, that matter will be brought before this council for approval of a uh, a fund change. So if there are any questions, otherwise I will get out of this matter. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chuck.
Any other questions?
I guess my question is, do we, do we have the option to say, hey, we'd prefer to stay within the current budget before we authorize? And say, do four or five vehicles instead of six?
Right, well, actually, we have a hundred and eighty thousand in there. We have a few expenditures that are just gonna come out. Where the, and the expenditure, the, those expenditures, uh you know, we can bring those in a different manner to you. But we're just trying to be transparent that in looking at, we know these expenditures are gonna come. The, the funding is there now, but we wanted to tell you the entire picture. But yes, to answer your question directly, yes, you do. You have the authority to just say, hey, I really don't want to spend over a hundred and fifty thousand. And, and not put a number to the trucks, you know. Maybe we can still buy six vehicles uh for this hundred and fifty or a hundred and twenty or, you know. So you, yes, you can, you can direct us whatever direction you'd like to.
Oh, no, that's kind of where I'd feel more comfortable, saying, hey, let's keep it underneath what we currently have, and maybe, since we need four, start there. If you buy, if you find a couple real quick, then we can always change it later.
But I would uh prefer just a dollar amount, because honestly.
Is it listed at a hundred and fifty now? Is that what's?
We actually have a hundred and eighty. I was in there.
Right, but what's the, what, what was the actual original budget?
Two hundred, wasn't it two hundred? It, it, I believe it was two hundred, two twelve.
I, let me just talk on our equipment, our equipment budget.
Just how much is in there originally?
We have currently, I'm gonna say around two hundred thousand dollars. But we do have some purchases that are budgeted to come out of that budget this year.
Those are those expenditures.
And we have a deposit that we would be transferring toward the end of the year of sales tax. So we will need to fund that with additional money.
So the anticipated amount left over after those expenditures come out is estimated to be about a hundred and fifty thousand. Is that correct?
No, I didn't look.
It's a moving target because we're putting more money in there.
It's constantly going.
I'd say that um we may need to come back and ask for about fifty thousand or sixty thousand more dollars after.
If we do the one eighty?
Yes, but the idea is, we don't want to deplete that fund one hundred percent.
That's what you're talking about. You're talking about just moving money from line item to line item, as, like, not necessarily going over the one eighty for purchasing the vehicles. Is that fair?
It, it is, I mean, we'll have to transfer funds. We transfer funds anyway, you know, uh when money comes in.
If you'd like, I could look at it more definitely, because I really haven't looked at those particular numbers.
I mean, I, I personally don't have a problem with the one eighty. If that's what they need, and they think that they can get all six that they need, and do it with the one eighty. There's also opportunities in other parts of the department or other departments where we will budgeted more than what we're gonna end up spending, so I feel pretty confident that if there's a one fifty and we're wanting to spend one eighty, that we're gonna find thirty somewhere else.
And if we spent four to five thousand just this month alone on maintenance, I mean, what are we gonna spend over the next little while if we don't get six trucks? If we only get three or four?
It, and if we do.
Well, what we need is four, is what he said, not.
Yeah, well, we need four um for sure.
Four for replacement.
Just replacement.
Replace.
We've got two others.
We still have people driving.
Driving their own.
Personal vehicles.
Yeah.
And that's where.
That's what the other two is to solve that problem.
Solve several problems in all. Uh you can put a dollar amount on us, it's fine. Uh we, you know, honestly, it could have just came up and said, hey, a hundred and eighty, it's in there because we wouldn't be, but we also know there's other things coming, and we want to make sure that we're transparent with you. And one thing that we do promise you is that anytime we transfer money, we will ask you and, or explain why in accordance to the budget policy, in accordance to what the budget that was approved.
And so for the second piece, what's the cap per vehicle? That you were saying, is it thirty?
Thirty thousand is what we're looking at, you know, at six, and maybe able to get to six for a hundred and fifty, you know. It, it's just a tough market. And the good thing, I mean, we're getting ready to start into the budget process. And then we can really define replacements, uh at what time. We have police vehicles we need to start talking about. Um so equipment will be, we have a backhoe that is, I don't know, it's old, old, old. So there's a lot of stuff, it won't all be asked for at one time, but we need to figure out a schedule and get to that, have a goal, and have a budgetary number to meet that goal.
So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't want to go too much and then say later on we budget. Rather, get what we need now and then budget in, you know, what we really need later. You know what I mean? So that's kind of where I'm at with that. I'm thinking the one twenty or one fifty.
And it sounds like, for whatever reason, not putting any blame anywhere, but it sounds like this has been quote-unquote deferred maintenance for many years in a lot of areas, and we're.
Well, you just have.
Some of it now.
And you have an age of, you know, an old fleet.
Not deferred maintenance on the vehicles.
No, I understand what you're saying. It just.
Deferral replacement.
Right.
Yes, and replacement, and some of the things that, that really uh Ms. Armstrong went over, that the council may not have uh quite caught on to is over all the years that I've looked at, is let's say we carried, like we did this year, seven hundred and fifty thousand over. Well, yeah, we carried seven hundred and fifty thousand over, but then they use that back in the operating budget. We don't do that. And that's what Ms. Armstrong was trying to explain, is we have a true reserve.
And by using it, you mean included it in the budget instead of being a true reserve?
Yeah, well, they, they said a reserve.
Right.
And then you rolled it back into to operate and used in the budget.
Yeah, we don't have to use that reserve. We have it there.
So we have a true.
But that's what I was just trying to.
Did you have something, Ms. Armstrong?
I, one more comment.
Sure.
And um I just asked Mr. Messer if any of these were water sewer vehicles, and he said three were. Now typically, we would take those out of the respective fund, and is there a reason that we don't want to do that?
Well, at this point, um without seeing, I don't want to get in, it, we. Well, at this point, um, without seeing, I don't wanna get it, it, we have, I have not seen the list.
Okay.
And if they are truly going to a utility and they will not be used, like he said, well. Pick up three of them with snowplows. You know, they're gonna be on the streets, so we wanna make sure though that we don't cross that line, that those will be used in that utility. So if they are using that utility, we would come back and say, okay, here's what, you know, we've purchased. Comes out of sewer, comes out of water, something like that, so. We we just have to make sure that what we purchase is utilized in that utility. I don't wanna get to a point of where a third of it's used on the streets and, you know. Because she is, uh, both of them are correct. If anything that's purchased for utility. Or any debt for utility, that utility has to pay that. And and a lot of this will start coming to you in the budget cycle. So you get a much better understanding and both of, well, all staff is very straightforward and. You know, there's nothing hiding. We hide nothing.
Council members, to be clear, to follow up on that, any, we do not know what trucks are going to be. Or what vehicles will be available on the market. And it may be that we find a vehicle that is perfectly suitable, that exactly fits the need. That wastewater has. And we'll purchase that and use it for wastewater, in which case the budget issue here. We're not even talking about that a hundred and eighty, it's going from a totally different fund. Realistically, however, we do not know what we're going to find. And which fleets are gonna come, what fleet vehicles are gonna come out and how quickly those could come out. And if they were all released at this particular time, the value that 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 Mr. Messer is estimating is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And essentially, what staff is requesting is. The flexi- i- i- is for you to provide staff the flexibility to make those determinations. Understanding that it may hit, it may all come out of regular. Funding, or it may come out of other funding. We don't know the answer at this time because. It's, we're we're not getting the look, getting to look at the Sears catalog or getting to to take a look at what's available. In the local y- used market. Because there is nothing available that is anywhere near the value for which. Um, we hope to find on federal fleet vehicles. And and I just wanna be very clear that the the authorization, authorization is as needed for the for the funding. To give the maximum flexibility for the best value for the citizens. Regardless of the fund that it's coming from and for each vehicle. When necessary beyond the the regular budget authority before it would come to you.
Is this how most cities are operating now where they are given a kind of a? Did you lose your mic?
Got it, okay, thank you.
So this is becoming more common, I assume, for cities then or having to find?
Oh, right now it is.
Where you have to.
There's nothing.
Given more authority just so you can get.
Yes, uh, you know, a quick where we, uh, you would trust staff to get the correct vehicle for the job. Um, because a lot of these auctions just last twenty minutes.
With the prevalence of online auctions and how quickly they go and how much more they're being utilized, I would say you're probably right. Well, yeah, and there's just not as much out there, so more.
That's that's what's happening.
If we don't take advantage of it now, if the market continues how it is, you know, if we wait two or three months, we might not be able to get them. Or they might be a lot higher.
And the other thing is, truthfully, there are trucks that are vehicles that have to be parked before long. I mean, you saw some pictures and. So we wanna make sure the foot doesn't go through and stuff like.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
And and we really do appreciate your questions and comments. Uh, because we like to make sure that we have direction from you and that. In this budget process, all these comments and all will really help and it'll all start tying together for everyone.
All right, if there are no further questions, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of six trucks for the Public Works Department?
The um, if I may.
Probably a dollar figure needs.
Purchasing vehicles up to a hundred and eighty thousand.
Do you need to have the per vehicle?
No. Because here's, 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 I'll just real quick.
Sure.
If you say six vehicles and we purchased six vehicles at a hundred, we we almost ties us to thirty thousand dollars a vehicle. One might be thirty-five, the other one might be twenty-two. So just the hundred and eighty thousand to purchase vehicles is what we are asking.
It and to be clear, if you would add. And 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 accept. Exempt and authorize exemption from any purchasing policy restriction on the individual cost for execution of of a contract.
And that's almost a given if you tell us, you know, we're gonna, we are not. Cause the purchasing policy only allows me ten thousand, you know, so, but yes, be and. For the purchasing policy. So and you don't have to go into all that. It's it's real, it's mostly a hundred and eighty thousand to purchase vehicles and. Exemption for the person, you know, purchasing policy, real quick.
So I move to approve the hundred and eighty thousand dollar being able to purchase um, and the exemption.
For the purchasing.
For the purchase of the vehicles. Of the policy.
Yeah, there you go. We'll get it.
I second, I second the motion.
I have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, and we will keep you up to date on this so that we can see the progress, you guys can see the progress and all, okay? Thank you very much.
Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Burton. You're good. All right, well, you might as well have just stayed up there. The next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero three rezoning. Z zero 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 seven three dash two twenty twenty-one, um, two hundred and seventh and Ridgeview. R dash R to RP three Woodland Ridge Crossing South. Mr. Burton, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. And so the action, we've, we've looked at this at last council and. It's taken back to planning commission and planning commission uh, voted five one zero. To um, send it back to council with the approval of the RP three zoning. Um, we, I can answer any questions. We've been through uh, a lot of it. It does meet the comp plan exactly. Um, to the comp plan is what the visionary statements and all show. So uh, in that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or if you have any comments that I can address. Um, we have reports and we have mark studies and things. Um, in this type of rezoning though, in meeting the comp plan, the visionary plan. It makes it fairly easy on staff because that's our direction. Just like you would give us direction on spending authorities and things like that. So in the next step on this though, is a lot more information comes in with every final plot. Um, working on a traffic study, we're also working in conjunction with that on the two hundred and seventh improvement. The two hundred and seventh improvement was put in place long before this was ever brought to. The city at all, any staff, council, anything. So we were planning on two hundred and seventh improvements anyway. And they will continue anyway. Uh, it is a minor arterial that needs to connect to major arterials. Ridgeview to Woodland. There's a lot of thought going into already, you know, what do we do at two hundred and seventh and Woodland? What do we do at two hundred and seventh and Ridgeview? Do we round about them? Is it signalization? What what the solution is there? Um, so just like any um. Departments or Mark or anyone else, we're trying to strategize for years out. And this development, it'll take several years to develop out. Uh, we have um. Other developments in the area that are being proposed right now, you know, I'm working with um, several other developments in that area. So um, and excise tax, uh, you know, we would, I can't say that. We have to get authority to use that excise tax for any type of project, so it will come to the council. Um, you know, the excise tax paid on this, I believe if I remember correctly, it's around three hundred and forty-five thousand. I actually made a note of it here um, on this piece. Yep, three forty-six. So there's excise tax that can be put into this also, so. It was a question at the last planning commission, I'll just go ahead and address this, uh, benefit districts. And. Yes, community development, engineering and public works. Do look at and study for improvements you li- by utilization of benefit districts. Whether it is you go into an old part of town and you replace all the sidewalks. Well, that's an example where the sidewalks are a responsibility of the property owner, although it sits on. City right away, it's still a re- responsibility. So you go in and you are gonna do all this, well, most people don't have three thousand dollars just to spend on sidewalks. You know, so we put it in a benefit district, it goes on their tax roll and they pay for it over years. In what my comment was on benefit districts and looking at this, we study what we call area benefit districts. There may be six hundred acres that we look at, say. This street project or anything of sidewalk project or benefits a six hundred acre area. Okay, and that's an area benefit district. Now, we've never had to utilize that. But for capital improvement projects, we have to look at all funding sources. We have yet to bring an area benefit district, but like I said, staff's not gonna hide anything. It might be that we have to do an area benefit district. Uh, we looked real strong at an area benefit district on the roundabout. We ended up with a a reasonable cost on it, nothing's cheap, but um, and we will. I believe we're gonna bond that one out. Um, so Webster Street out here when we did that. Uh, at first, we thought we'd have to bond it out and we paid cash for it. So those comments are just so that everybody knows the whole system that we look at. If we focus on one thing, if we just focused on benefit districts, I mean, everyone would be upset and all, but we're trying to do it reasonably. And efficient for the residents without any additional tax burdens. We can't always promise that. And we would never do anything without council approval.
So before a benefit district would be established, it would come to us?
Yes, and in an area benefit district, we would notify everyone that it affected. We would have a town hall meeting type, um, and then, you know, we would weigh all the options. Now, a lot of these options are gonna be already weighed out in the budget cycle. So uh, you know, you CIP and say this, this and this. And we actually have a couple of different CIPs. One CIP is utilization of cars money. The other CIP is utilization of general funds that come into the city or excise tax or. Um. Road, highway road tax, um, so as you can see, I'm not an expert on the terminology, but.
Can you real quick, there's people that might be here that might not know, just let everybody know real briefly what what the cars program is and some of those, so people that.
Yeah, the cars program is, it's a program set up that they participate with the city, the county does. And it's a lot of that is through federal funds that that just trickle down through the system. And we, cars, you you need to give them a five-year projected use of this money. Uh, the area, everything, uh, like this year, Cars Project is the. Signalization at uh, Webster and a hundred and ninety-nine right by QuickTrip. Uh, that project is already drawn? That's a yes or no? Okay, so it'll be out to bid here before too long, um, and we'll, we'll be starting on it before too long.
And for example, the Cars Program funded about half of Webster last year.
Yes, I think it was about half, wasn't it?
Pretty close.
Yes, real close.
So how does that work for two hundred and seventh? Say, you start, you know, the Cars Program's gonna pay for half of it and you decide. Or we decide, or city says, hey, we have to create a benefit district to complete this.
Right, so.
Does that mess up the funding from them or?
No, you can use benefit district funds for your portion. The only thing that cars would not let us do, uh, the way I understand it is. The base grant that we applied for, those funds would not be allowed to off, to utilize for our portion. Because we were gonna try and do that uh, on the project we have going right now. Uh, so, yes, but you can take benefit district funds and pay the city's portion.
But I mean, more, yeah, go ahead. Isn't our ARPA money eligible to be used for Cars Projects as well?
It is.
Yeah, so we have a lot of options to stay away from.
A lot of, oh, yes, no, and that's what I was saying, but we have to as a staff have all those options, you know, in mind and. And look at during the budgetary process and, and you'll say, well, do we have funding for that? Well, this is one that we may. Looked at an area benefit district or ARPA funds. Um, so there's a lot of options always. It's just what, or or just bond it with geo bonds.
We pick what we wanna do.
That's correct.
And we we always get all those submitted to us so we can discuss it as a council and.
Yes.
Be transparent and let everybody know what's going on and what we're.
You know, there was some that went on where you just went in and said, well, this is our five-year Cars Project and here we go. And we found a lot of projects that were really unfunded. Or they were funded with temporary notes that there wasn't even enough money in the temporary note to cover our costs, correct? So what we had to do and went to the previous council is. We had to utilize excise tax money, make a transfer and all that, but I. Finance Department is really on top of it. Um, I, she gets tired of me hat, um, always on her. No, we're gonna do this and that, so, but I think, but yes, to answer your question, there will be lots of options and most of those will be at budget time.
Okay. There was something you said that I think it was planning meeting or maybe last time about how far into the. That street expansion would go into the current Woodland Ridge neighborhood. Is that, can you expand on that and kind of what that?
Sure, so there's already existing right of way that is been proposed or that was put in place. When Woodland Ridge went in as a subdivision. So what I was showing, and I can show it again if you'd like, that. Most of those houses that back up to Woodland Ridge and all the trees, if you're familiar with it there, they all sit in right of way.
Two hundred and seventh, you mean not Woodland?
They back up to two hundred and seven.
The Woodland Ridge Crossings, I'm sorry, or the Woodland Ridge subdivision.
Right.
Back up to two hundred and seventh and the berm of trees in there is actually in right of way. Now, not say anything bad, but. Uh, community development, public works, engineering will not let that happen anymore. What would happen now is if you want that row of trees and all, then you put it in a landscape easement. We've done that. I I use Dayton Creek a lot because that was really the one that we started cracking down and doing things. Much, much better.
So are we gonna do our best to try to keep some of that stuff there or is it all gonna be gone?
Well, we're gonna do our best. A matter of fact, Dan and I, we've already talked about a lot of options to start out. Uh, where, you know, maybe it's. Uh, where, you know, maybe it's two lanes and and please, nobody take this as set in stone.
Yeah.
Cause this is what I get, but two lanes may start on the north. And go ahead and put the divisionary area and then as the traffic warrants it and it keeps going. Then we would put a lane on the south and maybe two lanes on the south. Um, so it's not gonna just magically be four lanes. So, and we, yes, we will do our best and we will work with the the residents in the area. To uh accomplish uh saving and, you know, we have, we have. Uh, walking trails that have to go beside these in accordance to our code and all.
Sidewalks?
Si- yeah, sidewalks, walking trails and connectivity, uh, and we will do everything we can to help. Like a lot of neighbors there have a fence that's one foot inside their property. And they could ha- actually have a walking trail two foot away from their fence or three foot. Where we will work with them and we'll work, staff will work in their mind also in protecting that as much as we can. Utilization of trees or things of that nature. A lot of people really just don't realize um how much right away is already established when the subdivision goes in. And easements.
Is there an anticipated, uh, like, do you know for sure right now that it will be four lanes someday? Again, I realize there may be a progression, but someday it will be four.
Likely it will be four lanes because it it is connecting very quickly to two major arterials.
Okay.
So I anticipate that, I won't be here, but.
And do we have a fairly firm date of when that cars money will come in for that?
Well, it's a twenty twenty-four project.
So it is on the books for twenty twenty-four? Okay.
It is.
What's specifically on the books for twenty twenty-four?
Uh, yes, the to start improving two hundred and seventh.
Woodland, uh, from Woodland.
Yes.
How far, the whole thing from Woodland all the way to Ridgeview or?
It's gonna depend on uh the um. Amount of growth in that area. Right now, uh, we would most likely try to get through this subdivision that's being proposed now. And then when the next one comes to the east, we would work another project to get to Ridgeview.
Right.
And I wish I had an exact answer for you, but we don't until we have the, and that's why we're planning now. With the right away and all that, and that's what was planned back. When Woodland Ridge went in.
And that's when the sidewalks and everything will go into?
Sidewalks will always go in with improvements of streets from now on. It is code and. It is code and we um now will make sure of it.
So it'll pretty much just sidewalks will start where the edge of that proposed RP one is there now and all the way to Woodland?
That's what.
Will stop.
That's what we would like to propose, yes. Now, one of the things that we do run into, it's just like the roundabout, is that there are some properties there that are in the county. Unincorporated. The county, I mentioned this before, the county worked very well with us and with all the residents there. To, right, to get that in and get the right away, and a matter of fact, I. Um, there was, we had to annex some of our right away here not very long ago.
And that's on the roundabout, just.
The roundabout, yes, I don't wanna confuse anything, but. But on two hundred and seventh, we would have to work with some people that are not in the commu- in the city.
I guess switching gears a little bit from the road to the actual what's already been approved, the RP one area.
Yes.
Can you confirm kind of the projected house types? I know we've heard. Uh, some people say.
Right, so um, in that, they did have houses, uh, there were some that they proposed. Uh, in just the preliminary layout that were on slab. Uh, some of them were two bedrooms up, fifteen hundred square foot. Uh, nine hundred and something square foot basement finish, that would give two and two or two and one. Two upstairs, one in the basement. The next step, that when they come in for a final plat and a phasing of it. They have to provide the planning commission all the house plans. And at that time, planning commission may say, uh, no, we want more stone on it or something like that, more aesthetic values. They may want bushes, you know, all maple trees or something like that. Um, so. To confirm exactly what they're gonna build tonight, we cannot because that's the next phase. And then that would go to you too.
Do we have a say in if they're slab homes or if they're basement homes?
No.
Cause that's an R one or RP one, they can do those, right?
And.
No, I'm just saying, either way, we don't necessarily have a say, it's more about the aesthetic look that we have.
Right, and if this was straight R one zoning, we couldn't ask anything.
No.
So, well, I I I understand, I gathered you did, but I wanted to make sure everyone who, you know. They just meet the minimum everything and and they could put metal siding on. Make it look like a barn. At least this way we have some control factors. One thing I will um address real quickly, and you were talking about slab homes, is we are uh right now working on. Um, trying to implement a code along with the new building codes. That a slab home would have to have some sort of safe room.
Which I know they're putting some slab homes behind me and they have a.
That's correct, and a lot of them are just doing it.
A slab home is defined as no basement?
Well, it is, but it it that's a, that's funny because a split entry home. Uh, where you go in and you go up, they pour a four-foot wall around. And then that they classify that as a basement, but you pull your car in and then you go upstairs. So, uh, yes, a slab home is technically without foundation walls sticking above the ground.
Um, I know there was a question by one of the gentlemen, as far as the. This zoning doesn't actually approve the preliminary plat, does it, or do, are we, we're doing the preliminary plat with this?
Yes.
Approval?
Yes, the the zoning approval and preliminary plat go together on this.
So the final plat will be where, do we have any say when it gets to that point?
Oh, yeah.
As far as like how big the lots are and things like that, or is it pretty much as long as it meets the?
As long as it meets the preliminary plat and meets the code as far as lot size and all, there's not much say on it. The say comes in on landscaping and aesthetic values. And uh, to give you an example, the code say, well, you can have um. Five doors per acre or something like that, or three lots per acre. Um, so they would have to stick to the code on density, but then. We have the say on the aesthetics and landscape, I keep repeating myself, so I apologize.
Mr. Burton, I would ask if if he would review uh part of your rezoning report. For the the ordinance under consideration, I know that that you've addressed this now. Five or six times over the past few, past month and a half. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, for the maintenance of the record, if if you would refer to. The items within your materials and particularly your uh department's review of. The applicable zoning, the applicable standards for the formal action being requested of the council. Uh, you can do so very briefly, but I do request that you do so in the course of tonight's meeting.
Yeah, so the standards uh that were looked at is Golden versus uh City Overland Park. We went through all the standards, we we had fourteen or. We had fourteen um standards that we used. That that is beyond what uh really Roe versus, or I mean, uh. What uh Golden versus Overland Park, that is beyond those standards. Um, and we we went ahead and, cause we look at everything, I mean, you know. So, if you want me to go through every one of them, I'd be more than happy to, we've addressed them all. And uh in accordance to our comp plan and everything, and those standards.
I think we've addressed them all, if there's anybody on the governing body that would like him to repeat them, I'm fine with that.
I'd be more than happy to.
Nothing. Now, is there any further questions, comments?
I was gonna ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burton, on the twenty-four townhomes that are pro- proposed, it's fourplexes that are maintenance provided, right?
Yes, the um by the uh Homes Association, yes.
Okay, so they will have a Homes Association?
Yes, they will.
Help maintain the quality and um being fourplexes that are maintenance provided. That means they're not cheap. They'll be nice.
Could be. Yes, and and I, in looking at those, I'm, you know, we'll we'll see when they were brought in, but. Yes, where they, the ones that they brought into us for a preliminary look. They're not cheap, I mean, they're nice, they have a garage, which is not required in a lot of this. And they will have divisionary um. Surveys to be able to sell individually.
And I think um with the citizens and what they stood up to talk about on um their concerns. There was four major concerns that I kinda noted and what was, they were concerned with being in a floodplain. And with the development going in, if it would cause them further issues. And maybe you could clarify that as one of the concerns.
Right, that's fine, um, so the the calculations will be sent to our engineering. And they will guarantee that it does not increase more than what's already there. The concern of homes being in a floodplain, they're in a floodplain. And that's what those are designed to do is flood. So, uh, but they will not increase it by this subdivision going in.
You're referring to existing homes in Wardenland.
That's correct.
That follow the floodplain area, right?
That's correct.
Do stuff that's in the proposed rezoning area.
No, there is, that's correct, so um. Uh, we, and we have federal standards that that they have to look at and engineering really does review all that, I don't have much to do with that.
Okay, the second concern was extra heavy traffic load put on two hundred and seventh. Public safety and pedestrian sidewalks, and it sounds like we've been addressing and talking about that.
Yes.
Just at this meeting. And the third was the compatibility of uh the comprehensive plan and how the multifamily fit in with the surrounding neighborhood.
Yes. So if I'll address that, knowing um in the comprehensive plan, knowing that two hundred and seventh was gonna be a minor arterial. Then the uh planning commission at that time and then the council said that. More of a multifamily type use would eventually occur against two hundred and seventh. Um, I've used this example before, is if you run up and down Medcalf or you go up and down uh sixty-nine highway. Against or visibility there or the block of it is usually a multifamily type use. It's a progression, and they even on this. I say took a chance, but they have to do these fourplexes to a good standard. Because they have single family right the next step instead of maybe duplexes, like you, we all see the progression, so.
And they will be bought, they won't be rented.
Uh, well, you can buy and then rent.
Right.
And I mean, it's no different than any house, but. Some of them will be for sale, yes.
Okay, and um. Also on the Cars Program.
Yes.
When we moved into Wolf Creek, Ridgeview was gonna be expanded within five years and it's two thousand fourteen when we moved in. Is that on the plans that that will be widened before two hundred and seventh to carry some of that traffic or?
Well, right now, we have a project that's getting ready to start um on Ridgeview right now in uh. Your area right there for the middle school. Um, the mi- the school did. Their excise tax, we agreed to u- utilize their excise tax to help fund that road. Uh, so there is a project that has started to help that congestion in that area. Um, and that's a perfect example of where the CIP was not. Combined into realistic budgetary cycles. There was, to answer your, but there was no money to do it, and that's why it just got dropped.
Would it be fair to say that, like, these are the types of decisions we're gonna have to make in the future? Where where the funding's gonna come from and what it's gonna be prioritized for and which streets need to get taken care of first?
That is.
Those types of things, yes, so like, these are future decisions that this governing body, whether it's us or whoever.
Oh, it'll be you guys as well. So what 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 staff's trying to do is you were promised that this was gonna take place and all that. We wanna give promises that there's funding already in place for that. Or some type of funding in place so that when this council or this governing body. Says, hey, we're going to do. Two hundred and seventh, we will do two hundred and seventh, we may not, it may not be four lanes, but we'll show the scope of the project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I know that went all over, but I think it's good questions and.
Something else that uh more than one person, somebody who I met with and and heard the concerns. And then also I heard it said again tonight by s- one gentleman, um, the term affordable housing. That's just not correct, is that true?
It's really tough to.
I I think that, i- if I may, Pat, the the.
Yes, please.
The the, there's a, there's a question here that. How does that, there is a formal, affordable housing has two meanings. Housing that is more affordable. Which is just housing that is literally a three hundred thousand dollar house as opposed to a four hundred thousand dollar house. Uh, there is also something called an affordable housing program, which is federal federally funded. Money to help um individuals both at a at a low income level. Have a a residence or a place to live. This is not a federal affordable housing project. This, and so the term affordable housing i- i- is in no way you here related to.
The federal funding program.
Right, the federal funding program or having i- i- individuals who are at very low income or indigent.
Right.
I- i- providing housing for, rather this, there is a hope that this, in part. That this project will allow some housing that is. Less expensive than some of the current housing.
A lower price point.
There is, yes, that will allow and, but that's, that's the difference here, I.
I wanted that to be very clear because more than one person has said that to me and I, again, tried to assure them that that. Is a misunderstanding or misuse of the term, so I wanted.
Yes, there is no, this is not a federally funded, it low income housing project in any way.
No, it's um, now, can we say no federal money? I mean, if you go get an F A T on it's. So, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, we can stretch this anyway, if you want, people can stretch stuff. But no, it's not, there's no HUD money going in to build these.
And I just wanna reiterate, especially with the comprehensive plan and this this whole thing, this is not something this council. Or or this developer all of a sudden just came up with this idea to put, you know, fourplexes.
Correct.
Right now, this is something that's been in the plan for seventeen years.
Correct.
You know, it's been a long time, so I just wanna put that out there that this was not something that we just on a whim said, hey, let's do this.
Right, and and to follow up with that and if this would have shown in the comprehensive plan to be. to be some other type of use that originally was looked at, then we would have twice as much information. But this follows the comp plan completely on visionary of what the use in the future. And remember, we're out, well, we will be here, I believe tomorrow or Monday, we will have an RFP out, uh, to redo the comp plan.
And that's what I was just gonna prelude to. That's a whole different discussion that we need to update the comp plan. I think all, all the governing body and the city staff is in agreement that seventeen years for a comp plan is way too long, and we need, and we want all the public's input in that.
Yes.
Say, you know, everybody join us, come to these meetings and say, you know, voice your opinion on what you'd like to be in that comp plan, 'cause we want everybody to participate.
Right, 'cause it's a vision of the community in the future.
Please, guys, please stay quiet, please. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I entertain a motion, and Madam Clerk, can you please call the role of the governing body?
We gotta-
Need a motion, sorry, I need a motion first.
Uh, I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash, what's the?
Zero three.
Zero three.
Zero three.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? With that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role of the governing body?
Mayor, I apologize for the interruption, very quick question. For the council, the, there is an obligation, uh, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, I don't mean to tell you what to do, other than to say, you are obligated to say, whether or not you have received sufficient information to make this determination from the city and from the citizens, whether or not you believe you are prepared to a-to answer the question, uh, before you, and whether or not you've, the record has been sufficiently made. I believe that you have stated all the reasons. I'm not asking any additional questions, but I wish to ask you, are, have you completed and made any statements that you wish to make for the record on this matter?
I, I will mention that I, I abstained last meeting because I felt I was too close to the proximity of the property in question. Pondering and, and thinking that, uh, after that meeting, this is a decision based on the landowner looking to sell, and the developer looking to purchase and make improvements on that land, and really has nothing to do with me over where I'm at, other than some personal things, but there, there, there's no, in my opinion, there is no legal stand. We've addressed the streets concerns, we've addressed the flooding concerns, we've addressed the home value concerns. In my opinion, those concerns have been met, and for that reason, I will be voting.
It's, I just needed to bring that forward, thank you. If you are satisfied, then you, then, then it is appropriate for you to move forward in, in the manner you wish to vote.
So are you wanting a statement by each one of us?
No, I don't, I don't believe that's, that's necessary, Mayor. I wanted to make sure that, that the opportunity was there. Um, e-essentially, to be clear, this, the, 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 the council set forth its legislative action in the comprehensive plan. In making a rezoning determination legally, essentially, you're, you are engaged in what is essentially a quasi judicial action. I don't mean to get too technical, but it's my responsibility to simply say, we need to have a record, and I wanted to make sure that, that the council had felt that you had had the opportunity to do so. Thank you all.
So, may I make a statement now?
Sure.
Sure. So, um, so, friends and neighbors out there, I, I live on the Woodland Ridge, and so, um, you know, I voted previously, um, for the development, and, um, we just generally have a different perspective. We just do, um, we have a gen- different perspective. And, and, and we choose to raise our children side by side, right? So, so like, um, so it's tough, right? It's tough. I'm the new guy too, and it's even tougher, right? Cause I, um, but, but I just wanna say that these are not easy decisions, right? Like, like, um, we live with you guys, and, and so, um, and so, like, I even question my own perspective here, I wanna do the right thing. I think, what I keep coming back to is, all of the, and, all the questions, and you raised many good questions. A lot of good questions. They're all good questions, right? Like, you guys do this for a living, right? Like, this is, this oughta be your thing. Um, very good, right? Like, you guys go up here and, and like, but on good faith, I think we've answered those, you know? And, 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 um, and, and I think if we look at this as well, how bad it could be, man, oh, well, yeah, I mean, there could be some, but if we see the good, and I see two-hundred-and-seventh street, I, I see a lot of good here too. So, I will say that, and, and I would say, I appreciate everybody's involvement, and you know, I, we gotta live with you, right? I gotta live, you know, and, and so, I, I want, um, I wanna do the right thing. But I think the right thing is to vote, and, and not to abstain. Abstaining is, i-in my, in my opinion, that everybody does with their own thing. Uh, that's a vote no, right? So, so I've, I've gotta take a stand here, right? Like, so i-i-at a bare minimum, you have some, I have to have some backbone, so that, that's where I'm at, and, um, thought you all deserved to hear that, at least. That is all.
And I'll echo what he said, you know, as far as, we really appreciate the public's comments. We appreciate all the time you guys put into all this, and that you guys care, 'cause we all care. We all live here, you know, I've lived here for seventeen years. I care what happens. I have four kids here in the school. You know, I c-I care what happens to the community, I care what people think, and, um, I think if this developer was trying to do something different than the comp plan, I think we would all raise our hands, and we would, we would shoot it down. You know, if he was trying to put in, you know, a big box store there or something big like that, I think we'd immediately shoot it down. But I think since they're following the comp plan, I, I think we have to allow it because it follows with what, whether that comp plan's seventeen years old or not, they are following that comp plan. They're not trying to do something different. Any other comments or speeches?
I guess I can say something. Do you wanna go? I'll let you go first, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think all the main concerns were answered by Mr. Burton, and, um, in the state of Kansas, the landowner's property is protected, it is his investment. And developer did look at the comprehensive plan, which was decided long before we all got on the council. And I think that each of the council members and the mayor and I have good heart to listen, but after listening to what some of the laws are in the state of Kansas, and the rights of a property owner, and his investment for his family, and the developer trying to do due diligence to the comprehensive plan, I think that we can place our faith and trust in those engineers that have looked over the flood, you know, issues that you had, and, um, the safety on two-hundred-and-seventh street. And, um, so that's kinda my thoughts along with Diana.
Thank you.
Um, I'll just say, you know, I, I agree, we've got a lot of questions answered. Um, we do have to live with everybody, so it is kind of a tough call, right? But for me, I'll probably be the odd man out, I think, I don't agree with how it, it, I don't, for me, it doesn't fit with the surrounding neighborhoods to add the, the RP three, and, and so, I know a lot of stuff's fit. I think RP one's the best fit, based off of, you know, going through neighborhood character, I don't think. And I don't agree with the comp plan in that particular area, so.
I also do wanna point out that when the developer first brought it to the planning commission, um, it didn't follow the comp plan, and they did shoot it down and made him change some stuff. With that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role of the governing body?
Mr. Young?
No.
Miss- Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houden?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Motion passes five-one-zero.
All right, with that, we will move on to announcements and reports. I don't have any current announcements, other than to thank all, you all for being here and participating. Um, we'll move on, Mrs. Roth.
No report.
Mr. Peel?
No report, Mayor.
Mr. Young?
No report.
Mrs. North?
No report.
Mr. Van Houden?
No report.
Mr. Burton? Madam Clerk?
No report.
Ms. Armstrong?
No report.
Mr. Messer?
I'm just gonna be the odd buck. Uh, I just wanted to report, we did have-
You wanna turn your mic on?
She has to do it. I'm sorry. Um, we, we did purchase a public work software system. I just wanted to give everybody an update. As we did our training this week, and we're gonna be using it, and so we're gonna be able to provide some good data to you guys. It's gonna take a while to get some in there, but we're pretty pleased with it, and, uh, work, moving forward with it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
No report.
Chief Henson?
I just wanted to let you guys know that Saturday night from, whoa, um, five to eight, we're doing, uh, pops with cops, so I know it's gonna be cold, um, but, uh, come join us, have an ice cream, and visit with us, um, for a few hours on Saturday night.
All right, thank you.
Uh, on Main Street, yeah. It's at the ice cream shop.
And you said five to eight?
Yes.
All right, awesome, thank you. Mr. Dunley?
Uh, yes, couple, a quick question, um, we've been trying to conduct, and now that we, uh, have, uh, hopefully, we won't have a snowstorm on the, on the twenty-fourth. I wanted to ask the council, um, if we can conduct Cora coma training, if I may conduct that. I'm anticipating an hour, and, uh, staff prefer to, if we, uh, did the training for you in a work session, starting an hour before the regular meeting. So six o'clock on March twenty-fourth, if that works for, uh, the focus will be coma training, but we'll also address, but I'll also address Cora issues for, um, for the council. And it's, i-if six o'clock doesn't work, then you, you tell me. Or that date, yes.
Six is fine.
Six is fine.
Six is good for me. Should work for me.
Uh, outstanding, then, then we'll pr-present, uh, I, I will have a presentation on the Kansas Open Meetings Act and Kansas Open Records Act for you, um, on that, on that date, and we would, and I will anticipate in the coming months that we'll address some other items that we're gonna do training on, on a one-to-two month basis. Thank you.
All right, next item is an executive session. That was an added item that we added on. It's consideration of motion to recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption. And we anticipate it's approximately twenty minutes. Is that right? So it's-
It's my understanding. I, I, if I could ask the council, we might start at like five minutes from now, if there's a break for-
Take a five-minute bathroom break?
Thanks.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, I would entertain a motion to, actually, entertain a motion to go into the executive session.
Uh, I know the city council recess into executive session for roughly twenty minutes to discuss, I'm sorry, not roughly, twenty minutes to discuss employee relation matters, and to conduct an employee evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception. Uh, KSA seventy-five, four thirty-one, nine B one, of the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The open meeting will resume in the city chambers. We'll have a quick delay of five minutes, and we'll return at nine fifty-five.
Yep.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Um, yes, you'd finish this.
Those in attendance would be the governing body, and then I, and then Mona Keisha for partial of it, correct? Mrs. Jones, sorry.
Ms. Roth, can you amend the mo-, or keep adding to the motion, thank you?
The city, uh, city attorney may provide legal- Persons to be in attendance, city, governing body, uh-
Hey, guys, we're still going here. If you guys could keep it down for just a little bit longer, please.
Persons to be in attendance, the governing body, city attorney, uh, interim city administrator, and Mona Keisha, uh, I'm sorry, Director of Human Resources for a portion of it.
Again, now I can say-
Yep, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Uh, all right.
Motion passes five-zero-zero. Motion passes 500.
We have to list.
Say the whole thing again?
Yes.
I don't think we need them. We can just make a motion to extend.
Yeah.
Um, can you, uh, read the statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pulling it up here. Bear with me. All right, let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened to open meeting at nine fifty-five approximately, and no votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session, and the session was limited to the subject stated. And then I entertain a motion to extend the executive session.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to extend the executive session for an additional fifteen minutes, which will go to, what is it, ten, twelve?
Let's go ahead and do twenty-five. Let's do twenty-five.
I was gonna say, to, uh, until ten fifteen.
Yeah, just to give him.
Which is about eighteen minutes.
Yep. Yep, I'm good with that. Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes.
Not bad. We'll be up here long enough, I think. Works out well.
Good time to try.
Aren't chairs usually rated for eight hours? Are chairs usually rated for like eight hours or something?
All right, let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened to open meeting at ten fifteen. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero.